The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Iggracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Eighteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by none other than Merle Dean Gales, the co-host of the Bobby Jones Gospel Show and a national icon, and she just happens to call St. Louis home, and I'm so honored that she's here today. We also have her sister and her father here. He's celebrating his 104th birthday. But before we begin prayer, please join me in the moment of silence for the father of Tracy Billups, Darryl Billups was Tracy's father. I don't know if you all knew that he passed away. And please, you know, if you have an opportunity, give her a call and ensure some comfort. Lady Gales.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today as empty pitchers before a full fountain. We realize that you are the giver of every good and perfect gift. We thank you for the gift of life today as we're on top of the ground and the ground is not on top of us. So we still can use our energies to be servants and be also stewards of the awesome assignments you have placed in each of our hands. As we come to you, I wish it were possible for me to name you individually, but we name you collectively as servants. And as a servant, we know that we must complete it through various methods, but always to give you the honor and the glory. For God still uses ordinary people to do extraordinary things, and little becomes much when you place it in your hands. And because I have the opportunity to stand here, I want to thank you for the gift of life from my 104-year-old dad who says to everyone, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." So as we take care of business here today, we take care of your business, and we are guaranteed that you will take care of our business. Red or yellow, black or white, we're all precious in your sight. And as we complete this prayer, we complete it knowing that you are going to take care of us and you're going to do the job that you've been doing. Our arms are too sharp to box with God. Take care of business today in your name. Amen.
Amen.
A woman, thank you.
Let's give Lady Gales a big round of applause. That was an awesome. Okay, all right. We're going to suspend our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize in the motion for our courtesy resolutions calendar?
Mr. President, I move that you adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Moved by Alderman from 22nd, seconded by Alderman from 25th. Alderman from 22nd, would you like to approach the dials?
Good morning, esteemed colleagues. It is with great pleasure and honor that we celebrate a constituent of mine who has been on earth more than 104 years. I'd like to read a brief, excuse me, resolution prepared in his honor. Whereas this Honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis have been apprised that on January the 26th, 1916, Oakley Clark was born in Thomasville, Arkansas, an all-African-American town that was destroyed by Klansmen. And whereas Oakley and his brothers and sisters were raised by several close relatives due to the untimely deaths of both parents from tuberculosis in their homes, he learned many valuable skills that would prepare him for his life journey. And whereas as a young man, he moved to Chicago, Illinois, where he began working as a tailor. It was here he met and married the late Bessie Shrugs. And to his union, three daughters were born, Merdeen, Odessa, and Janice. And whereas in 1941, Oakley relocated his family to St. Louis, Missouri, and began working with the Terminal Railroad as a messenger and freight car switcher. Whereas being young and energetic, intelligent and hardworking, Oakley sought not only to improve his life, but the lives of others through remarkable service to the community and the business he created to meet their needs, including subway cleaners, a service station franchise, and Ringside Athletic Club Incorporated, where many outstanding professional boxers trained such as Archie Moore, Louis Armstrong, and Fenita Cox. Whereas the Clark Siding Company was one of the first African-American-owned landscaping companies to receive contracts to landscape subdivisions, universities, highways, service stations, and other institutions in the metropolitan area. And whereas Oakley Clark is a fine example of goodness, love, hard work, and kindness. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause now deliberations and join with family and friends to honor and wish Oakley Clark a happy 104th birthday, and we wish him peace and continued good health as we direct the Clerk of this Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to the family at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Ladies and gentlemen, I have had the opportunity to know Mr. Clark back in the 90s. Not the 1990s, but his 90s. He was just a young man back then, and it's amazing how times flies. He's one of those constituents, when he wanted to get a hold of me, he knew how to get a hold of me. If I didn't return that phone call, he showed up at my doorstep. He was either at my house, my business, or my office. So when he needed something, he had the tenacity in his 90s and when he was 100 to do those tasks. I remember a story, this is unbelievable. Mr. Clark, at 100, had the nerve to go get a driver's license, and they gave it to him. At 100 years old, is that amazing or what? And he has a sharp memory. I remember plenty of times when we would get into debates, and it's amazing how he could take you 50 years back and tell you in detail what happened. He was real good at recording history. In his house, he probably has thousands of videotapes, VHS tapes, and probably Beta tapes of a lot of events. So he was truly a historian in his own right as he documented a lot of events and what happened to his family and people in the community. And it has just been a pleasure, you know, to serve as his alderman. I've never met anybody like Mr. Clark. I only wish God bless me with the opportunity to say 104. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for all you've done for the City of St. Louis. We appreciate you and we love you dearly.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Oakley. For the men in the room, my dad said, "Always take care of the ladies." And for the ladies, he would say, "Take care of your man. Don't keep fussing and always, you know, making these little squeaks. Get out of here, you cat," he said, "'cause somebody across the hall would say, 'Here, kitty, kitty.'"
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 1st?
Good thing the Alderman from the 22nd claimed his guess, because I was going to claim your guess. If it's not too late, I would love to add my name to that resolution, and if people would not oppose it, I would move that we pass this resolution and bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 1st, seconded by everybody.
I just want to know if you had a boyfriend, because I'm looking for.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please create another copy of this resolution and bank. And for Mr. Clark and his daughters, what that means is that all the aldermen now would like to have their name added to the resolution that will be given to Mr. Clark. So we're going to create another copy of it with everyone's name added to it. When people say that the board can't work together, when Mr. Clark came here, make sure they knew. They know that the board came together and 100% of them added their name to this resolution. Let's give him a big round of applause. Please proceed, Alderman.
I just want to say to Mr. Clark, I've been knowing one of your daughters for a few years. I'm not going to say a lot, a lot. And so I wanted to say to you, if you're half as wonderful as she is, then you're a wonderful man. The Alderman from the 22nd is lucky to have a constituent like you. I was lucky for, I had a person live next door to me, he became 102. So Mr. Williams was my everything. I've talked about him over the last 30 years I've been in politics. He died 10 years ago, but I still talk about him. And the house that he used to live in, we still call it Mr. Williams' house, even though his niece is now 99 and lives in that house, that is still Mr. Williams' house. So when you have a constituent like that, you're very fortunate, and I just want to say happy birthday to you, and my hat's off, and I respect you so much for coming here and still being able to be an active participant in the City of St. Louis.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I also just want to add my thanks and congratulations on everything that you've done throughout your time, Mr. Clark. I've known you and your daughters for a long time, and it always, always looked forward to the birthday parties at the house. And 104 years old, got your driver's license redone at 100. That's just amazing. That's just amazing. I hope I look as good as you do at 104. But let's give him another big round of applause. And finally, I want to just tell you what this resolution is. This resolution is the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the City of St. Louis and you read about our turnaround and the renaissance and rebirth of our city, you'll read amongst those records, Mr. Oakley Clark, and know that he passed this way and made such a significant contribution that we paused in our deliberations today to take this official act to assure that his record and what he's done was added properly to the records of the City of St. Louis. Mr. Clark, I am so thankful to have known you for all the years I've known you. Keep on doing what you're doing, and congratulations on your 104th birthday.
If you want to hear from me, you should have let me know before we come here, before this audience, when I was told that I would have to even thank you for what you have done, but I can say that to you this time. Thank you ever more for every effort that they've made that didn't come through them. Just thank you for having the good self and letting me know that they are so proud of 100. And I don't know my age, I can't even think today. I think it was, I'm thinking it was 19. I don't, I just, I can't think of that, but somebody know what my age would be today. And I want to thank you all for what you have done for me.
I just want to add also, several years back, Mr. Clark used to always tell me, 99 and a half won't do. He was determined to be 100 years old and more.
So today, we are also making Mr. Clark an honorary member of this Board of Aldermen. So congratulations, and I will let the floor leader pin you. Let's give Mr. Clark one more big round of applause. The 30th member of this Board of Aldermen, 2020.
Odessa Clark Owens, who is in Atlanta. But we thank you because I believe as long as you have breath, you can always give and you can always share. Mr. Boyd didn't tell you that my dad will say later on, when we get ready to take this pin off, you put it on, he'll say, "Don't you take it off, Jeffrey Boyd put that on there." And it has to stay there, but I tell you what, I bet Jeffrey won't forget when he called him at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning and said to him, "It's my attic upstairs, but these are not my squirrels. You get over here."
And I did.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I have several honored guests this morning, and it is all to celebrate the, I guess, not the end, because it's a continuing conversation, but the last day of January, which is National Human and Sex Trafficking Awareness Month. And thanks to President Louis Reed and his office, we were able to host an event downstairs in the rotunda this morning from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., bringing awareness and resources to this epidemic that has hit our city as we are now labeled the gateway right now to sex trafficking and human trafficking. So we have, first, I want to, on the floor, we have the legendary BJ, the DJ, who has through iHeartMedia, bring an immeasurable amount of attention to this issue. So thank you, BJ, for all the work you've done around this initiative. And we also have up in the balcony, Two Deaf Women Empowered Women's Initiative. Thank you all for your continued efforts. These are, this is the organization that we have been raising personal hygiene items for, for the love packages they give to women that have transitioned from victims to survivors of this, yet again, this epidemic. So thank you for the work you all are doing. I ask my colleagues to look at their faces, remember their organization. They have resources, monetary resources, to give people, especially women, get them off the street, get them housed, and get them on a pathway to prosperity. So thank you for the work you all continue to do. And downstairs, we also have the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department with their Special Investigative Unit around sex and human trafficking. We have Shante Duncan and Kenesha Davis-Pew with the She-Ra Organization. They have a safehouse in the 3rd Ward in the City of St. Louis. And we also had countless, what you said, Louis, about the, after we did the prayer about us working together, as a board working together, it also speaks to how this initiative has brought the city together, because there were countless organizations, I mean offices that came together to donate personal hygiene. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention the mayor's office, the Health Department, the Collector D's, Licensed Collector, the Treasurer, the Department of Parks and Rec, Department of Forestry, Citizen Service Bureau, of course, the Board of Aldermen, us, and countless other city employees that received the emails and reached out to me and brought personal hygiene supplies in. I thank you, I appreciate you, it was overwhelming, and I appreciate the support. It really, it did encourage the fact that we can all work together across this city. With that being said, I want to tell people that emailed me and called me this morning in a panic that they didn't have their supplies, that it's not over. We did this as a push for today, for the event down there, but you still have another week. So if you bring things in, if you need me to pick them up, or Two Deaf Women Initiative can pick the items up for you, you have all next week, because they'll be packaging these love packages next Saturday. So look forward to getting some more support for this. Thank you all for everything. And of course, we couldn't have done this without Alderman Pam Boyd passing the resolution to make this National Sex Trafficking Awareness Month in the City of St. Louis. So thank you for your leadership in that, and look forward to working with you all on some upcoming events to keep this conversation going. Thank you.
I just want to thank Shamene Clark Hubbard, because she has taken this by the bullhorn and ran with it. But you know, that's what youngsters do, so I appreciate her. She has that energy and drive, and her and I were working on, and I had to call the other day and say, "I am sorry because I have not stepped up with you, but I support this project 110%." I was honored this morning that she even brought it when Vacore had the homeless there, so she brought that to them also. So thank you so much.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, we're gathered here on January 31st. This is Have Fun at Work Day. And that's all I'm going to say.
Well, we all have to give a big round of applause for that. Approval of Minutes.
Approval of the Minutes, January the 24th, 2020.
Alderman from the 22nd, recognize on Approval of Minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for approval of the minutes dated January 24th, 2020.
Moved by Alderman from 22nd. Seconded by Alderman from the 27th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Reported city officials.
Reported city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Central West End North Special Business District Board. The appointment of Ms. Julie Hahn, a property owner who resides in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire December 31st, 2023. The appointment of Ms. Margie Williams, a property owner who resides in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire December 31st, 2023. I respectfully request your approval of the reappointment. Sincerely, Lyda Croson, Mayor.
Alderman from 28th, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Central West End Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Central West End North Special Business District.
Been moved by Alderman from 28th. Seconded by Alderman from 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? I mean, one like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Dispense with line items eight through 10, first reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 199, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz. An ordinance pertaining to the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act 1996 PK2, I'm sorry, 104 through 91, as amended. Amending ordinance 68109 by repealing paragraph A of Section 3 and enacting a new paragraph A thereof specifically by adding, redesignating the city's hybrid entity healthcare components to such the Departments of Health of the City of St. Louis as such. Board Bill 200, sponsored by Alderman Howard. An ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the classified service, including the compensation plan, terms, and conditions of employment, benefits, leases, absence, and authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance 70791. Allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. Board Bill 201, sponsored by Alderman Howard. An ordinance approving blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3933 Delores Street Redevelopment Area. Board Bill 202, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook. An ordinance amending ordinance number 66570, Section 1, authorizing the First Amendment to the leased assignment and sublease among the City of St. Louis, Missouri, 14580 Missouri Bottom LLC, Kingstra Materials Company LLC, prescribing the form and details of said First Amendment, authorizing other related actions in connection with such agreement, and containing the severability clause. Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderman Koltar. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the 21st, 2020, for the 300 North Taylor, I'm sorry, North Tucker Boulevard. Board Bill 204, sponsored by Alderman Martin. An ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for the 6924 Idaho Avenue Redevelopment Area. Board Bill 205, sponsored by Alderman Koltar. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January 21st, 2020, for the 1501 North-South Street Area. Board Bill 206, sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance authorizing and directing the direct of streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the 4300 block of Finney Avenue by blocking the traffic flow at West Curve Line of Pendleton Avenue at the intersection of 4300 block of Finney Avenue and Pendleton Avenue. That is extended first reading of board bills. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, for the fifteen zero one North South Street area. Board Bill two zero six, sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance authorizing and directing the direct of streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the forty-three hundred block of Finney Avenue by blocking the traffic flow at West Curb Line of Pendleton Avenue at the intersection of forty-three hundred block of Finney Avenue and Pendleton Avenue. That is extent of first reading of board bills.
Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of introducing Board Bill two oh seven, a copy of which has been placed on everyone's desk.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the sixth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introduction of the bill. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Mohammed. Alderwoman Bo, I'm sorry. Alderman Mohammed. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-four aye votes.
Right, by your vote, you stay in motion, Alderman from the seventh, and introduced Board Bill two oh seven. Madam Clerk, place Board Bill two oh seven at the tail end of the first reading calendar, and please read the forward.
Board Bill two zero seven, sponsored by Alderman John Coulter. An ordinance approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing the St. Louis City Board of Commissioners to accept the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty election efficiency grant award by the Missouri Secretary of State to provide assistance to the local election authorities to improve election processes with state funders, to expand the grant funds to assist with election activities, system and equip, equipment maintenance, voting equipment purchases, maintaining voter lists, and polling places accessibility. To fulfill the obligations of said grant, limit expenditures covered entirely by grant funds and containing an emergency clause. That is extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill one ninety-nine. To Public Employees Committee, Board Bill two hundred. To Neighborhood Development, Board Bill two zero one and two zero four. To Ways and Means, Board Bill two zero two. To the HUDs Committee, Boards, Board Bills two oh three and two oh five. And to Streets, Board Bill two zero six. That is extent of reference to committee.
Madam Clerk, please place two oh seven in Ways and Means.
So noted.
Would you like to read that in the record, Ways and Means?
Ways and Means, Board Bill two zero two and two zero seven.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one ninety-two, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Volmer. An ordinance authorizing amendment to ground lease between the city of St. Louis and Lucas Hunt Associates LP, a Missouri limited partnership for property and improvements, commonly known as the Hampton Gardens Apartments, located at fifty-nine twenty-seven Susan Place, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one three nine. That is extent of second reading.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill one eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Gunther. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Vacoro. Alderwoman Rice. And Alderwoman Boyd. An ordinance prohibiting the carrying of concealed firearms by persons who are subject to restraining order or who have been convicted of misdemeanor crime of domestic violence as provided in this ordinance, and the firearm such person is in receipt of has been shipped or transported in interstate or foreign commerce as prohibited by Title eighteen, Section nine two two of the United States Code, and containing an emergency clause. That is extent of perfection consent.
At the request of the sponsor, please place Board Bill one eighty-nine on the perfection and formal calendar.
So noted.
Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill one eighty-six, one eighty-seven, and Board Bill one forty-one.
Madam Clerk, at the request of the sponsor of Board Bill one forty-one, please place that on the third reading and formal calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adopt a third reading consent calendar.
Second by Alderman, moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Twenty-four aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second, and third read, and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill one eighty-six and Board Bill one eighty-seven.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofu to the end that these may become law.
We have none.
Second reading.
Resolution two eleven, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus. Opposing state intervention of local government residency requirement for public employees.
Alderman from the first, you recognize on the second reading of resolution two eleven.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of resolution two eleven.
It's been moved by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the eighth. Please proceed, Alderman.
Mr. President, members of the board, I want to remind people, this is not a resolution concerning whether you are for or against the residency of the police. It is a resolution opposing the state making that decision for not only our police, but maybe our fire, and in the future, maybe our other city employees. This is purely a local decision that should be made by us, and once we, a recognized legislative body, have made a decision, I think it's highly inappropriate that the mayor would go down or go to Jefferson City and ask the Republican government there to override our, our decision. Whether you like it or not, there were other things that the mayor could have done, she could have put petitions out and asked for signatures to have a vote. Since I've been here, I think we had two or three non-binding votes each time the residents told us that they did not want the police to move out of the city. It wasn't binding, but it was an indication of what they were thinking. We had a vote here in September, and we decided not to put it back out to a vote again. There was some criticism from the mayor that we were trying to get a quid pro quo concerning the twenty-eight wards going down to fourteen. Sometimes people indicate that quid pro quo is wrong. Oftentimes, when you're doing politics, you do make political deals, and they don't, they don't have to be bad deals. Both of them would have been ways to put something out for a vote. For me, it was not a quid pro quo, because I was opposed to the police and have always been opposed to the police living outside the city. But I'm not the final vote. But we did, in fact, I wasn't here, I was absent that day. We did have fifteen people, the majority of the people say, "No, we didn't want to put it out to a vote, I think that should have been final." If the mayor wanted something different, that's when you start doing hard politics. She didn't do that. She opted for what I think is a very wrong way, to go and ask somebody else, another legislative body, to overrule us, that is dangerous. I talked to almost all of our legislative members that are in the state, in the state, and they were also kind of upset, because she kind of went around them, because they told her no, because they knew what we had done, and they were respecting what we had done. And so, we have Republicans carrying our bill, speaking to what we should do, which is purely a local matter. And what really speaks to it's a local matter, they, in an effort to try to act like it was a statewide issue, they tried to pass in the House a bill that would include the whole state, and much of the state said, "No, you have no right to decide what happens in our cities." So, if you have no right to decide what's in those cities, you have no right to decide in the city of St. Louis. At some point, we're gonna have to look at that the city of St. Louis and Kansas City, the areas with the most African-American populations, were the only ones that were not, were not allowed to have control of their police. And that goes back to a Civil War thing, so who was with the Union or whatever. So, that's ridiculous, okay? We need to have a state that treats all cities and government the same. If you believe that the small towns and cities have a right to make a decision about where their police and their residents live, then you have to also be just as fair to believe that the big cities have that. If you do not, there is something wrong, and that is discrimination, and that is wrong on so many levels. It's as if the people in St. Louis and our elected officials, who are us, who are much more close to the people than the mayor, I want to remind the mayor, she is not even a mayor by plurality, that we represent all the people of the city of St. Louis. And so, when you go out and try to go around us, it makes it really hard for us to want to work with you. That is the wrong way to do it. You should sit people down, you should try to talk to them, and sometimes you just lose the vote, and you move on, okay? So, and then you put out misinformation. I was the chair, before I was the chair of Rules, I was the chair of Public Employees. The numbers that the mayor puts out about the police are incorrect, and in fact, if you go back and look in the paper, she and the personnel director had very different numbers, and there's a reason, because they don't count certain people who are getting paid as police. The other thing I want you to know is, they put this out about, "I can't hire forestry workers," and things like that. Yes, they can. We have, every year, we have forestry workers who come back and work for us every year, they're permanent temps. And so, if we were looking to hire somebody, the first people we would have hired are those people we've been hiring for five, seven, ten years. We didn't hire any of those people. A lot of things people can do by just not hiring people, and then making it so that people are just so worried that, "Oh, we can't find anybody." There are all kind of issues, things that we could do if we really want to hire more policemen, which I don't believe hiring more policemen is gonna resolve the issue. But I tell you what I am gonna share with you, when I was the chair of Public Employees, I asked the personnel director if he would share with me what was the salaries and then the benefits of the police from the county and the city. And you would be surprised to know that, would you add the benefits to the city and the county, the city police officers make about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, this is in writing, and it was put in writing before I became the chair, so they had started working on the draft, whereas the city, the county police officer only make about a hundred and ten or five or something. So, when you don't add benefits, you look like that people are not making a lot of money. That's a lot of money to be making, when a lot of people don't have any more than a high school diploma. No disrespect, because I respect police officers, and in fact, I want you to know, when it went for a vote, my community, we did not support either the taking over the police department or reducing from twenty-eight to fourteen. But when it got passed, okay, we respect that, so we now have the police. In order for us to take over the police department, I want you to understand this, we also had to pay money. It used to be that the state paid for, when we had lawsuits up to the first million. When we took over, we had to start paying for all of the lawsuits. We had to assume all the responsibility of all of the things that used to, the police board used to do. So, this was not a simple, "Oh, you just take the police back over." We had to assume things. So, in law, that's called a kind of a contract. If you do this, this, and this, I'll do that. And when you break that and then come back and change it, that's called detrimental reliance. Also, when you want to regulate where my police live, but you want me to pay all the bills, that's a regulatory taking, and that is wrong. And especially when you think that it's all right for everybody else to control their police, and not me, and not the city of St. Louis, and not these members of the Board of Aldermen, that is wrong. That is why I wrote this resolution. It is opposing state intervention of local government residency requirements for public employees. That is for us to decide, and if we want to change our charter, it is for the citizens of the city of St. Louis to decide, not state legislators that have no nexus whatsoever to the city of St. Louis. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and thank you to the Alderwoman from the first for bringing this forward. Just a few quick things. We sit down here all the time, and we complain about being preempted. We complain about, we can't pass stricter gun laws at a local level, because the General Assembly has taken that authority away from us. We complain about not being able to give our employees in this city greater benefits, because the General Assembly has taken that away from us. Many of us on this board worked very, very hard to get that minimum wage bill passed, only to have the state step in and take that away from us. I think that it is a very, very dangerous precedent to set for our mayor to go above us and to willfully give away our local control over an issue. I think that during the debate on police residency, there were a lot of very valid concerns that were brought up from members of this Board of Aldermen, concerns about how we would have police be able to represent our communities if they were coming from Baldwin and Wildwood and places that were very disconnected from the life experiences of folks who live in our city. We had concerns about the fiscal impact that this would have. We had concerns about the hiring process and how long it takes to fill some of these positions in the city. And so, I think that we gave the mayor a list of very valid concerns that she could come to the table and work with us to address. And rather than do that work, is seeking to go above our heads, and I think that that is very, very concerning. We need to have stricter gun laws in St. Louis City. We need to be able to give our, our city, our workers in the city raises and provide greater employee protections, and we can't do that right now, because the state has chosen to, to take away our control. And if we, we need to send the signal to Jefferson City that it is not okay to supersede us, it's not okay to take away our local control. We are all here to speak for our constituents, to advocate for our constituents, to push the mayor, to address the concerns that we hear from our constituents. And by going around us and trying to do this without addressing these concerns, and by willing to give away our local control, we are setting a very, very, very dangerous precedent for this city. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the eighteenth.
I agree that we should not give local control. Also, I'm concerned that the mayor and anyone else is saying that the more police will solve our problem. Our problem is not a police problem. Our problem is a poverty problem. And I will repeat, the people who are selling, almost half of the people who are killing each other are killing each other over drugs. Historically, I was part of that history of working to keep us from coming to this point by getting jobs and doing other things and providing recreation and education and trying to eliminate poverty in the poverty program. We got to this point, because the local government, the state government, and the federal government pulled billions of dollars out of this city and put it into the prisoner industrial complex by building, and it's a public works program, by building prisons and then having mass incarceration. by building, and it's a public works program, by building prisons and then having mass incarceration. And so the police, the law enforcement industry, not just the local police, not only are they, not only would we have to revert that money that has been taken in the past and that is being taken now needs to go to, for example, in St. Louis. We have other departments. Over half of the money is going to the police. And it's keeping my ward from getting the streets paved. It's keeping my ward from having grass and cut. It's keeping my ward from having parks with supervision and activity that people can enjoy. So if we have 10 different departments, and I don't know how many we have, I'm just estimating, why is it that the police, where crime has gone up, killings have gone up, why are they getting half of it? So that leaves the other departments with, the other departments have to fight over the other fraction of the number, of the money. But we need to, what I'm going to say in summary, we don't need, I didn't come down here for a piece of the pie. I can't, we're going to have to change the recipe. Let me say this, we're going to have to change the recipe where we're going to have to stop gun violence. We're going to have to stop seeking solution with people who carry guns, the police, the state police, and the military industrial complex. So we're going to have to change the recipe to a human services instead of a military and containment service that we are now a part of in the city of St. Louis. So the police, again, in summary, going to Jefferson City or going any place is part of the problem because the police are not going to solve our problem. Their job is only to arrest people when they have probable cause. And we just want them to do their job and not tell the false assumption that they are out here trying to solve crime because they are part of the problem at this particular time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I support this resolution wholeheartedly, and there's no answer, no one answer, to this problem. But I do know that what has been indicated as being a problem is not true. We do not have a problem in recruiting people to be police officers in the city of St. Louis. Our Personnel Director has shared that with us. Our Personnel Director has given us the last numbers. They sent 170-plus applications over here. Does that sound like we got a problem in recruiting? Now, these are the ones that they've already screened and said, go with it. Now, we're not talking about the ones they said no to, okay? So that's not a recruiting problem. We have the Cadet Academy. We have 20-plus ready to go into full training. So that's not a recruiting problem. We have people who know that already in place with the policies of our police department, after seven years, you can move. So when you talk to the rank and file on the street, they say that's not an issue with us. Because by the time we are young police officers, we get married, then we have our children, our seven years are gone before our children go to school. Because remember, that was the problem. The schools weren't good enough for the police, okay? That's not an issue for them. If you talk to your rank and file on the street, just walk up to any police officer anywhere, they will tell you that is not a problem for them. But all the other issues we've been talking about that have not been addressed for this police department, they got problems. And the retention is the number one problem. Officers are leaving faster than ever before. They're not doing that extra five or 10 years with us like they used to. They're 20 and out. And some can't even stay for the 20 anymore. They're just leaving because of nonsense. So at the end of the day, retention and operating properly are the causes. As you know, we've talked about the fact that, I know for me, I got second district and third district in a midtown ward. That makes no sense. So again, you have put them in a predicament where they are being looked at as though they can't do their job or refuse to do their job. But we're not giving them the tools they need so that they can feel good about coming to work, know they can do the best they can do. You know you need to add another district. You really need to add two more districts, but I'll let you add one to make it better. But we have got to do our jobs, and our residents know. You see, it used to be a time when they never saw any data. They didn't understand what was going on, but they're reading everything now, and they are not happy. We went down this road with the public schools when they decided only Kansas City and St. Louis would have charter schools, and what happened? Now you're sitting here with a public school system with no kids in them. They're being babysitted in most of these charter schools. The charter schools have the lowest test scores in the state. You only got two that rank. You only got two. So let's not go down that road again. Let us run our business here. And anybody who doesn't understand that and doesn't understand the repercussions behind all this, you better go back and look at the history. When imagine schools had to close, that was that big charter school system. They had, what, about seven, eight buildings? It was a disaster, all these children and families. Because all they do is they come in, they take all the money, and they leave. I know of at least 10 systems that went out of business claiming they were going to do better for our children. And if you think I'm against charter schools, I'm not. I was president of the school board when the law was passed. I chartered the first charter school in the city of St. Louis. But I said purpose schools. That was the construction trade charter school. We couldn't do that in the public school system. Do things that we can't do. We can't do the emerging language schools. We don't do, we couldn't do that well. That's a good idea. We couldn't, we really need to charter our performing arts schools because we need to be able to hire talent that can come in and train, and the average school teacher doesn't have that kind of talent. So there's so many things, purpose schools, not your regular schools. So look at what we have now. If we allow this to go forward and don't fight it as hard as we can, we, this body, need to be on a bus in Jefferson City. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I'd just remind everybody, please keep your comments remain to the subject matter before us, please.
I appreciate the challenges that our city is facing regarding filling vacancies, and I think we owe it to all of our residents to figure out what, from the police department to forestry, all of these, to figure out how we fill these vacancies. This is a challenge that has been plaguing us for years and is going to continue to do so if we don't figure out how to move forward. I did vote to put the residency requirement on the ballot as part of that solution, as a piece of that solution. It did not pass this body, but that is not the end of the conversation. There's still more work to be done, and I know I speak for many of us that we would like to work with the mayor's office, we would like to work with the Personnel Department to look at some of the ways that we can address this issue. So I think that, I agree with my colleagues that this sets a dangerous precedent. There are communities all across the state that are fighting preemption from the General Assembly. So I think before we would even consider going to the General Assembly, we need to first do our work here locally. We owe it to our residents, and we have not exhausted all of our options here locally to do this work. So I do stand up in support of this resolution because as the alderwoman from the first said, I don't believe that this is a decision about residency. It is a statement about local control, about our ability to legislate and make the best decisions for our constituents. Thank you.
All right. Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I do also want to echo everything that has been said. I know there's not oftentimes that we stand in complete agreement down here, but I feel like this is one of those which we should. And to echo again on the police, the alderwoman from the nineteenth had great comments about, we have recruits coming in, we're just not retaining people. And the mayor's own authorization of 50 residency waivers, of the 50 that were authorized back last fall, one has been applied for and that one was granted. None of the rest of them have been applied for. So if residency was the issue, then these would have been applied for and we would have had more people coming in. So again, I want to thank the alderwoman from the first for leading the charge on this. And as the alderwoman from the twenty-eighth said, this is a piece of the puzzle. We have so many other things that we are working on as a body. We've come through with banning the box. We're working on gender pay equity. We're working on, you know, raising the minimum wage for our workers here. Some of those things are coming through the mayor's office, some of those things are coming through our body, and these are ways that we can work together to address these issues head-on. I brought up this week that I want Slate helping to train up our own workforce into some of these jobs, and there are ways that we can close these silos. We have a Personnel Division and we have a Training and Employment Agency, and we have unemployed people and unfilled jobs. Why are we so siloed? Why can we not work together and get our own people into these jobs? We cannot give up on our own residents. So I stand in support of the resolution from the alderwoman from the first.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first, you recognize the close.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd just like to thank everybody who's going to support this resolution and to say that we at the Board of Aldermen are leaders. We are not followers. We are leaders. We have, we pushed minimum wage before the state did. The mayor herself, when she was a member of our body, pushed a thing about, what was it about, drugs or medicine that only this county had passed, and so we passed that and now other people are doing it. We don't need to follow a General Assembly. We don't need a General Assembly to tell us what we can do because we are leaders. This is important, not to attack anybody, but to say that this is a wrong way of thinking. I really don't think they have the legal right to do it. And I think that we need to talk to our city attorney because we are a charter state, and the whole point of being a charter state is for the legislature not to be involved in local issues. This is a local issue. I think we have a very good lawsuit. They're hearing us up in Jefferson City because I'm talking to our legislative bodies. And I'm hoping that when they get this, they will show that this is an indication that the mayor is but one branch of government. We have three branches of government. The legislative body is an equal branch of government. And if they know that in Jefferson City, they should also know that, that we too are an equal branch. So with that, I'd say I renew my motion to pass, adopt Resolution 211.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the first, seconded by the alderwoman from the eighth, that we adopt Resolution 211. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Kotor. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kong. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Kong. 19 aye votes and three no votes.
By a vote, staying the motion, all the alderwomen from the first, and adopt the Resolution 211.
That is the extent of second reading of the resolution.
Ms. Lane, some unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, February the fourth, Parks and Environmental Matters will have a meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, February the fifth, Rules will have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Public employees will have a meeting at 1:30 p.m. in the Leisure Room. Thursday, February the sixth, Transportation and Commerce will have a meeting 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. And Friday, February the seventh, four board meeting 10:00 a.m. in the chambers.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that we will have a Streets, Trafficking, and Refugees meeting at nine o'clock on Tuesday, and also we will be raising the American flag at 10 o'clock right along Marcus Street, not far from the Marshal's Desk downstairs, in honor of Black History Month. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further announcements? All the one from the twenty-seven.
Yes, Mr. President and the board. I wanted to encourage everybody within the city of St. Louis to please make sure that your residents sign up on the website for the census. They are in desperate need of people to work. They're starting from 15 to 16, up to $23 an hour. And I went to the census meeting the other day, and they're really trying to pump this up. For each person that's not counted, we lose $1,300. And so in the, oh, it's up to 2,000. Oh, the alderwoman from the nineteenth, she said we lose 2,000. So I'm really encouraging that we really push the census. Our homeless need to, we need to make sure they are counted because everyone that's not counted, that's money our city loses. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? All the one from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to share with the community that there are a number of programs out here to help people in workforce development. The Urban League has a new program now. They are actually working in the state prison. So they go in, they get people trained, they find out their needs, they have them prepared so when they walk out the door from serving their time, they walk into employment. And so if you have someone who is there, make sure that they get involved because we want them to have a good quality of life when they walk outside that door. Also, they've taken a lead with the census as well. So all of the Save Our Sons offices that you see, whether it's in the city or the county, for the Urban League, they will have all the applications for employment. They also will share with you and help you understanding how to fill out your census form when you receive it. It is critical for this census. As a matter of fact, based on the data from the last census, our state could have been in such a great position, but we lost a lot of money. We lost a lot of money. So we've got to make sure that this is a priority for everybody. And when you talk about the jobs, go get those jobs because whether you're receiving assistance of any kind, your employment does not count against it. So go out and do this job, make some extra money for your family, buy a new car, whatever you need to do for your family. That's good money. So I, you know, please go, please take advantage. Thank you.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the following aldermen, alderwomen from the third, fourth, 12th, 14th, and 16th due to necessary absentee.
Move by all from the twenty-second, seconded by all from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by a 100%. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the twenty-second, recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn till February the seventh, 2020, 10 a.m.
Move by all from the twenty-second, seconded by all from the tenth. All in favor, signify by a 100%. Aye. Oppose? Stand adjourned.